We can't afford to be that long with an I-council.
No. Thanks for that.
Things to do, councilor. First of all, the agenda, number one, apologies for absence.
Right, we have apologies from councillor Pensa and Essensa, councillor Aho, councillor Eho, councillor Seebollo will hopefully be attending, which he may be late. And same with John London, his possibility still may come, but otherwise he will send his apologies on. And please write Essens' apologies too. Thank you.
I want to take you to sixteen, what is in the table?
I'm worried about it.
I'm not.
Yeah, it's apology, I'm probably not.
I'm not holding it down there. Close the hole.
I think that's counted.
Don't worry about it. Right.
I'm not bothered, I think it's fine.
As usual, declarations of interest. So first of Nottingham County Council. Not here, Brockston.
Ray and John. Hannah.
I'm not discussing the lotments, no, I don't think. Uh. Is it lotments or are you discussing that?
Yes, it's all.
In that case, it's lotments. Thank you. And then next was the correct, any corrections on the meeting, how the nineteenth of October?
On that section one three seven, I was allowed to vote in the state of town, wasn't I? As I was doing, so do you want me to zoom out of the room? Did you debate any or something? It's just a, it's just a minute, so it's just created on minutes.
Yes, okay, when we get to that then.
Yeah.
It's up to you, Mary. It depends, it's up to you, I'm just to say I would advise not to speak on it, but yeah.
Well, I've spoken.
No problem when you're being here.
That's all right, I won't speak on it though. I was going to say something to John, I was going to say I didn't want to speak on it, but obviously not vote on it because you should. You know what I mean, I'm.
I will be wary.
I don't think of football, but there's a few things I wanted to say, but I won't vote on it because it's not my.
I think the, I think, sorry. I think you have to be careful because if you're going to say anything at that meeting, they could say if you've actually declared an interest, if you say anything to them.
What do you think, am I allowed to eat football play for that?
Oh, I couldn't do that.
Section one three seven, I think it's all right for both of you to do that, we just don't vote on it, that's all. I think we're both the same on that.
Sorry. Misconception on what you told them.
Otherwise.
I wrote for a minute, Mr Mayor.
Yes, otherwise, uh, uh, there we could even have a chance of read the minutes. Can we have a proffer, the councillor Rindell and the second one, councillor Pitts? Any actions from your previous meetings at the town hall?
Yes. Um. Stapford website, Stapford Town Council website has been updated following the last meeting from when Inspector Ryan came. So we've put his blog on, says he's been updated. And he sent a letter out to Lloyd's Bank, it was drafted, he takes bank to dial the councillors. And I've just received a reply yesterday. And basically, the reply is saying that although you appreciate you're disappointed, we're not providing Stapford in a mobile branch. And there is a bus, public transport from Stapford to Beeston every ten minutes, which takes around five minutes.
You mean every hour?
Um, so basically, if anyone will just have a copy, let me know, but otherwise there's nothing.
I'd like to say something about that. The bank itself said, I quote, "A decision will not be printed until after the middle of January." Thank you. They tell him, oh, they've done it already without informing, uh, the residents.
And I think we should make a comment.
We've made the decision.
We've made the decision, so we've made this decision.
On the thirty first of January.
Councillor Rindell, it's right, councillor Pitts.
And I think we should write back pointing out that the boss of Beeston is watching now. And I think obviously has not got the correct information. I think we've got a point, and that big point is that.
Councillor Graham.
I agree with you. Graham. Graham, that's my brother, I look at him, I'm thinking you, I'm pretty well. Sorry, right, they, they did run the talk with petition then, and you know, they did say they'll get back to it within eight weeks or something. I was councillor Rindell, that takes us up to January time, so it's not across the might I said up to, I don't, I don't know. But I can agree what they said, right into them, that is a bit wrong. Um, and it's a shame they're not talking to the concerns because that's a hell of a lot of people, and there would be more than signed petition, you know what I mean, there would be, isn't there?
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's just sad they're not listening to us as a town council and left us without a bank. Um, I know, I can't really talk anything else about that because it's just the longest thing, isn't it? But yeah, it is, it is really sad that that sort of stuff went through. We tried, haven't we?
Um, I just can't make a comment about it. Um, and also the contents of the, of the letter and the way it's written, I think it shows complete disregard for the paper of Stapford, particularly the elderly people who are perhaps unable to, um. And I, I think it's, it's very sad, um. I'm very sorry about it.
I can, I agree, I can do exactly, definitely, she's right.
Okay, and also, um. Um, I did correspond to Brockston Borough Council regarding the polling, the ward boundaries.
Sorry.
So have you ever been to comment?
Just, just, yeah, just on the bank, right, just on the bank, which obviously is a major shock to the town without a doubt. Um, I'm also having problems with the capacity, I suppose, that the next trade union is as well, I don't tell them all. Right, I've spoken to the girls, right? And what lawyers, what lawyers are saying to them, I don't know whether the Davids are aware, what lawyers are saying to them is that the two ladies who have been for a long time have asked for voluntary redundancy. But they're saying they're not giving us them because obviously they've been there, I think, Jill's been there thirty years, David, hasn't she? And, and the other lady has, I forget her name, Jean, I think. Right, so obviously I've contacted ACAS about that because what they're trying to do is obviously get the two ladies there to put them onto it. In other words, you were opposed in Nottingham or wherever, that takes, which I think is totally out of order, and ACAS looking into it. They're contacting lawyers and things like that. Because to, the reason probably, and I'm not presuming, is that both ladies, if the redundancy package would be quite good. And what I've suggested is they try and force them into another job that they want to take. But I've talked to ACAS about that, but I thought I made you aware that something that I'm trying to do with my extra capacity would shock you, or whatever it was. Something like that, you want it?
Okay.
There we go, I can't remember yet.
Okay, um, the other item from the previous meeting minutes was that, um, polling ward boundaries. The reply came, and it's basically, "Thank you for your comments regarding various ward boundaries in Stapford. Unfortunately, the current review can only deal with changes to polling districts. And this is not therefore possible to amend borough ward boundaries, as suggested by the town council. I will however keep the suggestions on file, and when the opportunity arises, will consider if the changes could be made." So that's the reply. Um, the other item was regarding the tree preservation orders. Um, the reply came from Brockston Borough Council saying they'd had a look at the trees in question. And they said they did not believe that the trees would be suitable for a TPO, which is a tree preservation order. There has been an amount of controversy over these trees. Trees are not on land due for development, the land is a county council highway verge owned and maintained by Nottingham County Council. It would appear that the trees have recently been inspected by Nottingham County Council. There are ten trees in that line, six rows, four cherries. Two of the rows have been marked for felling, green dockings on the trunk. And one of the rowing at the entrance to the field farm development, that is marked for removal. Given the poor condition of the trees and the fact that they are not under threat from the development at this time, then unfortunately you cannot apply a TPO to these trees. And there is no, um, no hazard risk to the trees marked for felling. And I would suggest that the councillors contact NCC to see if there's any replacement tree planting for the area.
I, I think that's absolutely disgusting reply by Brockston Borough Council, and I, I don't opposite that tree, so whether that's an interest or not, I don't know, but anyway.
On the half.
The, the one tree near the entrance, there's nothing wrong with it, and the only reason they want to knock it down is because it's in the very way of that pot that they've put there. And that's another story. And, and I think it's disgusting, and they was told by Nottingham County Council not to touch that tree, there's nothing wrong with it. And then the developers, which is working on behalf of Westernmans, come along, I've got it on video, and dug as close to it as the camera, they're very good bulldozer thing. And we watched the rip in the roots, so after they've been told to leave, that's disgusting, that is. The rest of the trees, my, my feeling is, the reason they don't want to TPO them is because yes, it is county council land, but when we're going to face two or three farm eventually comes forward. They'll try, they'll suddenly begin in the way of something, and they'll start doing what the county does. And I, I think it's important that these trees are protected, they are TPOs, I will be contacting the county council. Maybe if, if everybody else, you know, wants to do it individually, or, or if agreement, get this council to do it as well.
Evening, Mr Mayor.
Contact, contact them, as I know, but we do want. We do want the TPO put in there, we want them to look at it, as it's on their property. Let people settle on the discounter.
So you know, sorry, this is just us, Richard, you know, who, who, who brought the letter to them, saying?
It was the county council, they're saying it's their fault.
The apartment, it's gotten off.
Right, it'll get highways, yeah.
Yeah, I was about to say, which Richard has just answered the question for you. Um, in fact, yes, highways need to be, um, told. Um, it is a disgusting situation. And if they're able to do this every time they build, um, you know, not going to be trees left. So you're quite kind, uh.
Councillor Pitts.
Uh, and this was, I think, the town council's factory, so can I suggest, of, 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 the county, so we write the town council. That the town council writes on the basis, you know, how we've got Brockston's replies, and if we go back, keep, keep, yeah, it's not those trees.
Thank you.
That's the proposal.
So let's take a look at this proposal. So all four of them. Are you nervous about him? Oh, no, go to, uh, anybody gets up and goes, and you're staying. All right, so I think we're all four, you're right.
It's on the front. Do you want us to do something else first, and then why you get yourself talking up?
Any requests? Could we have a bit of order, may I please, one at a time? Any requests from the public to address the council?
No.
In that case. Item five is, uh, very timely, I can't wait.
Well, okay.
Item six.
And what's it doing that, is it progress support on the?
It's built as, yeah. It's built as a local plan, a local planning inquiry.
Okay. Um, so to deal with the neigh, to deal with the neighbourhood plan, first, thank you for the invitation. And just to explain, I'm a, a planning consultant, working on the neighbourhood plan for Stapford. And also representing the views of the town council on certain matters, on the Brockston local plan. Which has its, uh, public examination, used to be known as a public inquiry, starting on Tuesday, and going for two weeks. And in front of an independent inspector, who will then find, or not find, that the Brockston local plan is sound and legal. Um, so just to take you through the, the main points on the, um, what we said about the Brockston local plan. And then I'll just update you on the neighbourhood plan afterwards. What the inspector does is ask a series of questions. So the first question, is it, um, in compliance with all the legal requirements? And there are two that are relevant. One is that they're meant to cooperate with other districts in Nottingham. Uh, to see if there isn't a way of solving any planning problems that Brockston's got in another district. But so all of Nottingham in reality is one built-up area. And we're making submissions to say they haven't done that properly. And quite a lot of evidence is handed in to show that it wouldn't be a waste of time because in fact, the key issue is how many houses are being built. And Brockston are not building enough. But Nottingham city are building above their target, at the present time. And so it would make sense to talk to them in a very robust way. To say, "We can't accommodate all of our housing without taking key sites out of the Green Belt. Do you think there's any scope in the city for providing a bit more?" I know the city very well, I produced the City of Nottingham Local Plan. And I did a lot of work for the Last Corps Strategy Inquiry. And there are brownfield sites all over Nottingham that could be developed for housing, and there's a strong housing market in Nottingham. So that's the first point that, um, we make. And then the second point is about, um. Any plan has to have a sustainability appraisal, so that you look very comprehensively at, um, how the different policies score against different criteria like retaining biodiversity, providing housing, um, traffic, uh, crime, oddly enough, is on the list. Economy. And what we're saying is that the, um, assessment that they made about the land west of Coventry Lane is totally inadequate, doesn't make any sense. And therefore the whole sustainability, sustainability appraisal is inadequate. Therefore the plan isn't in compliance with the law. I think what I would be saying is, if the inspector decided to take that site out of the plan, then the flaws in the sustainability appraisal don't apply, and we will then say, then it's all right, use it to me. It's only not all right because of what it says about this site, I think. Um. And then generally on, on, uh, housing numbers, um. We're saying that the numbers that they're proposing to build in the next five or ten years are totally out of kilter with what's been achieved in the past and are unrealistic. They're not, they're not going to be achieved. They haven't looked enough at brownfield sites. I recall that two years ago, I think, Brockston appointed a special officer to look just at brownfield sites. I think what that officer did was release the site of Barnes in Beeston, what used to be the, the bus headquarters. But that didn't need much releasing because the owner was desperate to do it, and it had been Brockston council that had stopped him from redeveloping for, for years. Literally because I had talked to him a lot. Um, I don't know where that officer is now, or what that officer has produced, but I don't see any really proactive assessment of what could be done on brownfield sites in, in, um, Brockston. And there are sites all over, um, the whole pub outlet provision has changed in the last five or ten years. So has filling stations, there's, there's filling stations that have sent petrol five years ago. Now it's a big site with three or four guys in the corner washing cars down on a Saturday morning. That's just a waste of land, you know, that they could be developed for, for housing. The whole rest home, care home thing is changing, some of those rest and care homes now, um, in Nottingham are being converted into plants. Because it, it doesn't work anymore as care homes. So we'll be saying, um, all that about the, the, the way they've gone about it. But I think the, the main part of what we've said is about that site west of Coventry Lane. About the land east of Coventry Lane, the, the, the people know which land I'm talking about, it's, it's near the crematorium. What was said about the land east of crematorium, uh, east of Coventry Lane is, we haven't formally objected to that because the town council feels it's got no remit to comment on what's not in its area, not formally speaking. But we fully support the submissions made by the Bramkirk Neighbourhood Plan Group or the Bramkirk Forum. Anyway, there's no Bramkirk Parish Council, I don't think. No, but they have put in a lot of submissions, very detailed, and we've said, I'm, what I've said in the submissions is, I've read them, fully agree with them. On the land west of Coventry Lane, we list the purposes of the Green Belt. It's to conserve the landscape, it's to separate settlements, it's to prevent the coalescence of settlements, et cetera. And if that land west of Coventry Lane is not a valuable part of the Green Belt, then I'm asking, where is? It, it, it's obvious, as you look at it, and we put one photograph in, not, not the best, but it was the one available. But I'll be saying to the inspector that should go out and look at it, and should go on the, the top of the hill at Bramkirk Park. I don't know how you're going to get the inspector up there, I suppose. They can get up, can't they? Everybody else gets up there. And, but you have to go up there to appreciate what this is all about, because when you look north of it, what you see is open countryside. And in the distance, the built-up area of Nottingham around Balloon Woods, but they're separated, and they should stay separated. And the difficulty with the land at Coventry Lane is they say the two bits are needed together, west and the east, to make a decent sized piece of housing. But even that isn't big enough to support local facilities like a primary school and shops. It's got no, um. It's got no, uh, public transport service. You wouldn't walk down Coventry Lane, uh, unless you were tired of living, I think. Um, and, and what's going to happen, I think, in the future, if, if they allow these two bits, in order to create something that's got the, what they call the critical mass, is big enough to actually accommodate local facility, they're going to be looking for land further north than, than that. And if you go back to the core strategy and before that, there was a Green Belt study produced, I forget who it was that did it. But it was proposing, it was.
A child study, wasn't it?
Yeah, 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 that's it. Uh, it was proposing a thousand twelve hundred houses in that area, so sustainable urban extension allegedly. So it's impossible to say what the chances are of, of winning on this one. I'm doing one for Bolton Parish in Rushford at the minute as well. So I'm picking up how they go, and picking up one or two hints. And I hadn't realised, but the Brockston Core Strategy, by law, they have to start a review next year. It's only got a five-year life, and then it has to be reviewed. So what I would be arguing, I think, is these sites may be needed, they may not, but it needs a, a more thorough examination than adding them in at the last minute. Which is what happened at, particularly west of Coventry Lane, it didn't appear until the very final stages of the, the plan. So to leave it out for now, do an early review, and then see where we are. Um, there's some useful stuff, the latest household projections from government give very much lower figures. So from two thousand and eighteen to twenty-eight, they're only saying another five thousand households in Brockston. And you've got to look at, compare that with the housing figures that they're putting forward, which are much bigger. So there's a mismatch there, so there may be some merit in playing for time, like saying, take them out and go through the review. Now, that's it in a nutshell. Um, there's, some, some members have seen what I've put in, haven't they? Hasn't everybody seen, or just some?
It's been circulated.
Okay, right.
It's been circulated.
So, I mean, uh, any questions on either the process? I mean, by the way, anybody can turn up at, at this, um, inquiry thing that's, it's in the town hall, isn't it, that's starting Tuesday? Uh, anyone can turn up. I, I think some members are appearing at some of the sessions. Uh, I'm going to three of them, I think.
I, I shall be at the session, the sessions, I've got it.
Okay, any questions?
Uh, I'd just like to clarify, you know, the, the area at the back of Coventry Lane, uh, on the left of Coventry Lane, go up there.
Yeah.
Go up to Wilbur Cottage. Right, I understand that was going to be kept as a Green Belt corridor. And there was a, uh, a coffees in the middle that sort of broke it up by a morrow, is that, am I right?
Yeah.
What's happened to that plan now, has that just been kicked into touch again?
Well, I mean, we're saying that it is part of a wildlife corridor, it's part of a, a, a natural footpath that you, you, you come all the way north to Field Farm. And you work your way through there, and, and it has real value. We said that because of that, in the neighbourhood plan that's being produced, at an advanced stage, um, we put it in as a designated local green space, and we'll explain why we've done that. Yeah, I mean, it is.
He's writing in.
Well, I mean, you know, the hint that I get from people is that these inspectors are very keen to approve plans, to get something on, on, on the table. Um, but they don't necessarily have to approve them exactly as they are. And, and the over, the over provision in Nottingham city equates to Coventry Lane. So numerically, they've got enough spare to be able to take Coventry Lane out, and for there to be no difference between the Coventry Lane and the city. And there is a lot more in, in the city, it's happening more.
Well, the only problem is, is that our remit only goes up to the Hemmops Towne, from there onwards.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Back there, so we don't have it, don't have it saved up.
No, no.
Yeah, um, you might think I'm coming round the house here, but I'm not. Actually, when we had Brockston's first plan, that was garbage, we all agreed with that. After it wasn't filled, then if you know, from the distance. The part two of their, of their plan, um, actually our plan, Stapford, has to go by Watt, the borough of Watt. Regarding number of.
No, it doesn't.
Whatever. Now, am I correct in saying?
No, I'm clearly, I'm clearly not. Um, there is no figure for Stapford, there never has been. Uh, the figure is an estimate for the built-up area of, uh, Brockston.
Yeah, yeah.
Which includes the whole of, um, Beeston. Um, it includes all the, the Rylands, all of that area. But there is nowhere in the neighbourhood plan that says at least eight hundred houses should be built in the vicinity of Stapford.
But this is something that you're going to be able to.
Well, I, I'll be saying there is no, there is no fixed figure, so for us to, to come up to a line. And I will be saying that this area is already accommodating field farm with four hundred and fifty dwellings, so, which is only just getting off the ground. Um, I mean, I, I, I don't think they'll necessarily listen, but by adding more land in, I think you delay development on the existing sites. It's common sense, isn't it? It's common sense, isn't it? There's only a certain size of market. You wouldn't increase the sales of an ice cream shop by building another ice cream shop, would you? It ain't going to work because there's only so much demand for ice creams. You've got to slow down the sale. And I think the same's going to happen with that.
But we do have the Stapleford restaurants and places.
We've always got to be careful with that.
Yeah, what, what councillor, you said, I think, if I'm right on this, anybody that voted to support part two of the local plan actually voted to support the land to put Coventry Lane on that.
Oh, I think that is right. Yeah, 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 as a vote, politically.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, absolutely right.
But we were told that was going to be kept as a corridor for Green Belt.
When you voted for part two, I'm sorry, I don't know who's on Brockston council and who isn't. Any member of Brockston council that voted for the local plan? No, but nobody said they.
Obviously there isn't.
Voted for Coventry Lane, remember that? I'm sorry if you've been mistaken.
That wasn't being clear.
Right, 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 right.
Nothing was being clear.
No, no. I mean, it's one of these things where you do your best and wait and see if you get a good result.
Ken, the land west of Coventry Lane?
Yeah.
Had that already been included in part of the development for the Bramford Hill School?
That, the...
What I'm trying to say is, I know what you're saying, I totally agree. But in the land west, already have been agreed by, I think the county council, they know that that is going to be, that is going to fund, unless I'm mistaken, I'm agreeing with the council. I thought that land was going to fund the school.
No, I think it's the land east is going to fund the school. I mean, I've heard them all tied up to the rebuilding of the school. But I'd be interested if anyone brings that up, and I think people will, who are arguing for the developments, as to what the figures look like when you say fund a school.
Well, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
I think you know what I mean, like, you're on about ice cream shops. That is the ice cream shop and school.
Okay, yeah.
That's what I'm talking about.
But on the funding thing, it depends very much on how much money you get in off the sale of the land. Do you see what I mean?
Oh, yeah.
If the funding, if the new school is going to cost 45 million or whatever, and the land's only going to bring in 21, you've got a funding gap.
Yeah, yeah.
And it also requires that certain transfers of money from one body to another can be done. And I'm not totally convinced of that myself. I've never seen the detail of it. But county council, for example, has a responsibility itself to get the best value for things that it sells. County council can't give away bits of land to anybody because that affects their own finances. Do you see what I mean? I don't think any authority can give away pieces of land if they don't have a statutory responsibility for the provision of what goes on the land. Do you see what I mean? So I think probably Stapleford council could give away a piece of land for building allotments because that's a function that they've got. And so saying, here's a piece of land, you do the allotments, they're fulfilling their function. But I think Stapleford could give away a piece of land for someone to build a shop in order to get more shops in the town centre. Because that isn't a function of Stapleford council. And we'll have to see, but it's not as simple as people are making out. Councillor Long?
Just to clarify, we'll call it the school land, shall we? That's the remit, nothing second to that for the moment. But after, maybe in some years, I think it'll be quite a year or two yet for anything to advance, find a second. For both sides of Coventry. Because the west, or if we go back from here, that's Brockston and Nottingham.
Just to answer that, John, Paul, that's what confused, what was written is it's confusing. Why was it in the plan? Because we were still debating, but why was it allowed to be in Brockston Borough's plan? Local plan two, why was it allowed to be in and we were still debating it? That's just a question.
Okay, I think what they will say, yeah, what they will say, and I don't see anything in the, in the local plan that says it's to fund the school. What they say is, we've got to find land for housing somewhere. And on its merits, this is a good site. That's what they will say. I think it can be pointed out that it's owned by the council. But then what you're saying is that that has warped, that twisted their planning judgment. Do you see what I mean? And I'd be a bit nervous about actually saying that in open court, as it were. It's very difficult to prove that. They will say, we've got to find land somewhere, we've assessed all the bits of Green Belt, taking everything into consideration, this is the best site. So that's what you've got to knock down. Councillor?
I don't know if worth the word. I've got to be careful because I'm a school governor, so I don't know if I need to declare an injustice. How I'm talking about that bit. They said to do so, I am doing it. But there was a press release came out in the past two or three weeks. Have you seen it? There was one released by the county council and there was one released by the school saying that issue has been resolved, building the school, who's funded it, all this and that. So I'm thinking, would it be worth us as the council, so we all know what's happening, inviting Paul Harry along, who's like the, I call him the head head teacher because I never remember what his director, his director. If we invited him, because he could sit there and explain to us what's what. And if anyone, I know it might be a bit late for this thing, but it's still nice to know because I know it's Bramford, but a lot of residents from Stapleford, our kids go up there, don't they? And I thought it might be helpful if he came here and spoke to us about that because that is something moving forward. And that, but yeah, there was a statement, and you can look on the council's website and also the school website, they did release something in the past few weeks. We found it.
I'm sorry, I have a note. No, I'm making a note to myself.
Yeah, you're right.
Monday, I need to sort of brief myself on the latest position on the school because it's going to be discussed and I don't want to be sitting there not knowing anything about it. So I'll go on the county website.
Just as a note and question, that's outside our boundaries in this at Stapleford.
Yeah, but it still affects our residents, doesn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, my interest would be if the argument is being made that, and I can ask if that is the argument for the land west of Coventry Lane, if it's to fund the redevelopment of the school. I want to know, number one, is there any other way of redeveloping the school? Not using from the release of land? And number two, I'd be asking some detailed questions about when you get the value from the land, if you see what I mean? And when you're building the school? Because the two have actually got to match up. It's not quite as simple as people are making out. People, if it all went through and all these bits of land around Coventry Lane get in the plan, then somebody, somewhere has got to get planning provision. And that takes a while, a year or two. And then you've got to put it on the market. And the price that you're offered may not be quite what you... You've got a statutory duty to get best value for the land and you'd have to get an independent information on that. So you might not get any income from this site for five or six years. So are you going to wait five or six years before you deal with the school? So I think I've got a mental note to get myself up to speed on the school so I know more questions to ask of the Brockston people when they're sat there.
Yeah, just a thing to add, there is another confusion, of course, though. It isn't a county council school, it's an academy.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
And it's maybe the county council's land. But the school is an academy and I think that also might be thought as considerably further. Because of course it would be a different thing if the county council was going to be building the school.
Yeah, it wasn't.
So I think that's another thing that's worked better in mine, because we've seen that the county council cannot just give money to an academy or shouldn't do.
Well, no, I mean, what really should happen, if the county council's got a piece of land, it can sell it, it becomes capital receipt. It goes into the county council's funds. And then the county council has to decide what to do with that money, taking account of the needs of the whole county. You know, there could be a school in Topley where water's falling in this area. Now, it would be right to use the receipt from Bramford to fund that, actually, you might not think so. But that's the way it works. It's one county council and it has one load of expenditure and need for it.
I'll just finally say, I don't know if you want to have a quick read. If I have, I might score it up now and you'll stay on screen for you. He came out in the last week or two. Feel free to talk whilst I crap over him. It's a bit long.
Well, this says it both ways, but I will read you one bit that it's got in. So it says, it's anticipated that the sale of the housing land will generate a substantial capital receipt which will be reinvested into the construction of the new school and other infrastructure improvements across Nottinghamshire through the county council's capital programme. Now, what that suggests to me, that's the wording you would use if it was a Nottinghamshire school. You don't have a Nottinghamshire capital programme for schools that you're not building. Do you see what I mean? That is exactly what I'm saying.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
That's what confused, all I'm saying is, with your Brockston plan, that was, that was in it.
Would that be usual, Richard, if you could, in your email?
Well, it would, yeah, 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 yeah. I mean, I'm not saying I'm right about this, that's my first thoughts, but I will make sure...
Well, you've got the information.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, that's pretty bland. There's no detail there, there's nothing about dates, when it's going to be built, what the amount of money from the land is expected to be. So it is a press release and it's mainly intended for residents and parents. But behind that, there should be committed reports and things. And the problem, as you know very well, that if you're intending to fund a new school from the sale of land, there would be a report to the relevant county council committee and it would have all the financial figures attached. Otherwise, not a proper report in it. So I'll have a look at it. Any more? Any other questions for Ken, any other comments? Any actions?
Yeah, just like to, I'd just like to thank you for coming this evening. Obviously, the mayor will do that, but at least learning a bit more on what you're proposing to do. I think inquiry is very important, obviously. And obviously, you're going to get up the scratch at school land, so thank you for that.
Yeah, just before you go, Ken, can you just update us on where we are with the neighborhood plan? Sorry for keeping you, but just to say where, so we know exactly where we are.
Yeah, the formal consultation has finished. I have all the responses. I need to write them up into a report called a consultation statement. Do another very brief report to show that our plan is legal. And then BFO, there's a thing called a screening exercise under European environmental thing, which I've done two already. So this one, I'm not saying I've just changed the names, but it won't take long. However, I've been bogged down with this. And also, we spent some time, haven't we, releasing the funding for this year, which hopefully is...
Just play the same, there's no need to worry about the funding.
Okay, okay.
That's not imperative.
So, what I will do is sort out the bits and pieces over the next 10 days or so and then we submit to Brockston for them to advertise it and then we move on to the examination. I mean, the urgency to some extent has gone out of it in that we weren't going to have it ready for this examination of the Brockston local plan. So what I'm just going to have to say is that it's been through all the consultation stages locally and this is what people have said. It's got the support that we put it through every household in the town. And it has the support of the vast majority of people that responded, et cetera. And I've done a web link for the inspector to the neighborhood plan website where you can see all the documents that have been produced.
That's fine.
Yeah.
So we've got them, time's up.
For it going to Brockston, yeah, a couple of weeks. But then it's in their hands. Are you thinking of this election to...
Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
Ken, before we go, Ken David, because obviously you've been the big investigator in the neighborhood and you said the region and all that. Is, because I know it's in Brockston local plan, the AGS still and all that, is our neighborhood plan incorporating some of that as well?
Well, it's incorporated what we could at the time.
But since then...
Obviously, there are things different. We can't operate now and...
Yeah, no, will a statement be made to that effect, mate?
Well, we'll have to do that.
Yeah.
I'll talk to Ken about that. But again, we don't know what's happening.
No. Just before you go.
Don't worry.
Okay. And just before you go, formally thank you for what you've done for us.
No trouble.
Have a good weekend, Ken.
Yeah, have a good evening.
I'll see you on Tuesday.
Six months, and then local government reorganisation.
Well, we've done the same with that consultation earlier. I did put some stuff out which we should come, what I'm expecting. Sorry, I'm just retrieving, Ken, or my... The only things I'd like to just put out, that people, that came to the meeting that the town clerk had mentioned. Because it seems to me, lots of things standard about what is happening and everything else. And this was not done by any councillors from the county council. This was done by private companies, why I'm doing this. But I think just as a very brief of the things that I want to add. It does not affect the standing of the town council. Full stop. That question was asked by a number of town clerks. So it has got nothing to do with abolishing the town council or anything else. It is purely looking at the district and borough councils. So that's one thing to really sort of clarify. There's always talk about Nottingham City and everything else. We were told by the people there that Nottingham City cannot legally take over because they are a unitary authority already. And that it is not being done as a takeover, it's being done as a reorganisation. But a unitary authority does not really have the power to take something over. So there are the two bits, really, that I think seem to be very much misunderstood as to what happens. I don't really want to waffle on anymore because the consultation's over with anyway. We did circulate things and everything else. There is likely to be another consultation sometime in January when they've decided what they're going to propose for, if anything else. So I think that's all I really want to say there. If anybody else got any questions, if they want to drop me an email or something, I'll try and answer them from the meeting.
Okay, really quick, thank you for that, Lee. There's also been another press release, wasn't there, the other day? Did you see that as well?
Yes.
I don't know if anyone's seen that, the town clerk's emailed it out to everybody. Where they said, I assume everyone's interested in it. They said there's some new rules and regulations being looked at, they're going to announce what they're going to march.
It has to be done by, I think, May, because after that...
Okay, I'll give you that.
I think it might be March, but yes. After, be it March or May next year, they cannot any longer apply to the government to actually do that reorganisation. They can be asked by the government to do it. But they can't actually just say, we want to do this and submit it. I think that summarises, I know the press release, that summarises the thing. The rules that are there is such that they would... It depends then on being asked to look at it, rather than saying, we want. I think that summarises what...
It's in the fact that it's in that.
Yeah.
Number nine, we've got this two update.
If Richard don't mind saying something.
Yeah, number one.
Well, actually, some of the councillors have actually been sat down and looked at the paperwork that we've been given. We're not impressed. The list that everyone has actually got, have been sent out to you, regarding bullet points. The main bullet points are necessary, and we, and everybody, including the residents of the town, really need to get and respond to this consultation. This is very important for the simple reason is, it just doesn't affect the bottom of Derby Road, Sandacre. It affects ninety-nine percent of the state foot itself. And Chair, I would say, Mr Mayor, I would say that if everyone has to get these bullet points, and I'm sure it's on the website now, isn't it? I haven't looked at it. Is this on the website?
I think about time to.
Can we make sure it is? Thank you. The point about this is that we could sit here all night and discuss this. Well, I will say to you at the moment, the plans which we were given, yes, are not appropriate. I'm not just saying that because they're bringing up some new plans next year. So instead of us spending all these hours, then if we concentrate on these bullet points, yes, then obviously that would be the best thing to do. Thank you.
We need to send the responses as a town councillor, and I think I'm sure I should thank Theresa, as a resident. The amount of time she's put into doing this, supporting, obviously not just the town councillor, but the people who've spoken for. I think it's, you know, we've got to thank her, it's important. Yeah, we do need people to write in and ask people to say, there's some really important points that she's put in there. One of my concerns is obviously the bridge closing, but again, that's all in there as well. So, yeah, people, definitely, please do read the minutes, if that's what we call it. Because it's very important, and it's more important that people do write in to the consultation, because the more people that are writing, one, as a town councillor, they're a bit brilliant, that's everyone agrees to. But individually as well, because the more responses they get, you see what it says, it is just a consultation. So they've drawn pictures on a map, we've got to tell them whether it's right or wrong, because we live here, people that live here can write in as well. And then they'll look at that, they'll come by sometime next year with another one of these maps, and it'll have different things on it. We really need to keep an eye on them. Definitely. Counselor London.
Thank you, Chair. Before we had done the meeting at trial to the public, I'm actually privileged to have a good hour's chat with the top people before, and I can hold it for you. But since then, we've got, there's now been a suggestion, these are proposals of suggestions, there'll be more. And there's been a very, they've had a very long discussion over, you're not going to believe it, by the lot of civic engineer, so I'd have some idea of the problems involved. But tunnel, from what I've eaten, beautiful, that'd be a very serious point forward. So the general code of on proposal. As regards coding the history here, I have no idea of that country. They said that would happen.
Tom Murray.
Yeah.
They're going to postpone it for a year.
Yes, twelve, fifteen months minimum.
Chair, I think the amount of due due.
The relevant will not.
Richard, no, it's them, it's them.
Chair, we had us all arguing, I know John's saying one thing, I think, but our MPs' idea is to have a tunnel straight through, which you commented as well. Right? And I believe that's in the statements as well, David, isn't it? About the tunnel, proposed tunnel, isn't it? So we had us all getting into a itty bitty, we've said this, we've said this. As Richard said, let's just put us things in and just go from there, and just sit out and go.
Just to finish this off, obviously, they, they had a bit of a chat all of it earlier. Propose on proposal, new proposal coming out in the future. So I said we sit here all night and discuss this. Yeah, absolutely, no one would believe that.
I don't know which one of you was first.
Yeah, I'm... The consultation's got to be by the twenty-first. We can only go on what we've been given. We have been given in writing that at the moment they're anticipating closing the bridge for eighteen months. What I would suggest to you then is, I'm, hopefully you've all read this thing, I'd like to sort of gloss us a bit, which I'll suggest in a moment. But I think it's important that we make our comments from the council, and it's important that everybody else does, that we make them on the basis of what we've got in front of us.
Yes.
Because we know this idea of the tunnel, we did discuss this in the little meeting that we had, but I think the important thing is, we can only make a comment on what is here. I don't believe that what we've got here is anything like the final thing. But I think it's important that we make a comment on what's in front of us. And I'd like to just briefly come back in a minute, but I'll let go.
Well, if you'd like to do that, because that was only going to propose once we've got the right wording.
Right. Well, ultimately, we're going through the great details of the wording, but I think they, hopefully you've all read this. I would say firstly, okay, we're trying to do the things with the consultation elsewhere, but that's my way there. But I think firstly, we should point out very strongly that closing that bridge for fifteen to eighteen months is not feasible under any circumstances. There's no route for the buses or anything else.
Drop road up here?
That there has got to be either another bridge or some alternative solution. Whether it's a tunnel or not, I'm not convinced about the idea of a tunnel, I'm not civil engineer either. But I think that's one of the things that really is extremely important, that we put in that that's what has got to happen. There is no way they can do that bridge without either having an alternative bridge or anything else. That's the big point too, so I think we can sort of stress that, and I think hopefully everybody will agree that that's the central thing. It's got to be done offline. The point three, where we made about traffic and air quality and things, obviously going to do the thing, but I think we perhaps ought to stress a bit more than we did on in this minutes, that there needs to be, if the construction traffic is going to follow the routes that it says, which is basically Morbridge Lane and Derby Road, that there's got to be a total real line of the traffic lights at the road, because you cannot come down to it and turn left with a great big huge line. It ain't there, unless it goes through Llanys. So I think we need to stress that a bit more, that that needs to be looked at as the route. Obviously, we've got the hoppers and the traffic things, but I think that the actual traffic lights themselves are a major problem. I think the other thing is, that we have perhaps stressed that, is the bits about compensation. We felt when we were having a little discussion that this pink area is really not satisfactory. We'd like it extended to include more of the houses involved. I think the other thing to do is also stress that the actual compensation package, which is something like, what's it, ten percent above market value or twenty percent? If ten percent above market value, as I pointed out at the public meeting that we had, ten percent in the market value might buy you a garden shed. Because sadly, the properties that are likely to be involved are not going to be huge market value. And we know that affordable houses at Field Farm is at two hundred and fifty thousand. And I think we ought to stress that compensation in the amount is inadequate. Doesn't cover a sufficient area. And that we want a better package. And I think the other thing is that whatever happens, it's going to affect the business in state. And we want need to stress that we want packaging process now. Not in three, four years' time like they did with the tram. That they've got to put a proposal forward for compensation for the businesses and everything else. They've got to give in compensation to them when they've gone bust. And I think we need to stress that too. I think the bit about that we put about the flood risk, that's definitely sort of there, we can do that, as it says there. We all know what flood risks are. The noise as well about the normal working hours, we've had quite a long discussion about things.
We did, yeah.
I think like everything else, they found the trap. It's all right then putting down a nice little thing about the things, but perhaps we ought to point out what the problems are going to be with the noise. And the final bit that we put down is an information centre on High Street. We have asked HS2 before, they said they would look into it. They've obviously done absolutely nothing. As they just do, their idea of consultation seems to be like many other people's ideas of consultation. They come out, come to a meeting, tell you what they've done, do this, and then go away and don't listen to anything anybody says. So I think it is important that we put that in. I don't see, well, the employment jobs, they're going to get us a thousand jobs. Oh, with the time we've lost Kennel Park and everything else that they're going to demolish, we've lost a thousand jobs at least. I don't believe. I think the importance of an information centre is to give us more up-to-date information. We did discuss things about the training, but I think we all came to the conclusion, they ain't going to employ anybody locally. Construction to that side is just going to get done. That's my thing, what I think is a bullet point that I took off the notes that Theresa took. Quite happy to add any other bits. But hopefully, I've covered what's on there mainly, and that we make those particular points.
Well, I want to add an order to that, actually, because when the work actually starts, if it's going to be eighteen months or fifteen months or eighteen months, state foot will become, it could be sacked. And if you're going to tell me that no lorries are going to come down and get stuck down there, it's going to be absolute men, it really is. You know, they've mentioned nothing about that at all. And the, well, the actual construction of the bridge, if it takes that, what are we going to do when the money runs out? Like it did in Derby.
Well, they just.
They just stopped everything. It's going to be eighteen months, it's going to be like five years. You know, really, it's when the money runs out, because we've got, it's supposed to run away.
Anyway, as Counselor, getting back to, getting back to, I understand exactly what you're saying. Getting back to this situation, a councillor person has made some suggestions of adjustments, which I know that the town clerk has written down. So a proposal that the town clerk and the town leader get together when it's possible to put these new pieces in. And if everybody's happy, I would like to propose that this is done and actually passed by the town clerk for tonight, so we can get it done, because it comes a case of, it's quite critical.
Yes.
Just before we do something.
Is it too late to invite the HS2 people back to speak to them again?
We're not, we're in the process of doing that. Chair, to be.
We've got it up till the twenty-first.
Yeah, we've got it, but we've arranged some of the.
They're trying to.
Have a guess, David. That bloke with the haircut, ain't responding to us again. It does surprise me, but I'm sure, perhaps you two would get over it for us, please? Steve Muller, or whatever his name is.
We're now on a mitigation board on off the issues of the county hall. And I can attest to it on the meetings, I'm just not sure how many we're allowed. A lot of things have been said tonight, going to the mitigation version boards, you know, it's just not going to happen. But the information comes down and I get time to sit on them, because sometimes, like, we meetings clash. I can't work on one in another. And they're right, they're telling us meetings, and we're trying to get invited onto the mitigation board. After all, town hall is in my mother's back. So nobody's like, I can't be in on it. So we're getting close over this all already. Don't see what we can do.
Yeah, I've just got one point that wasn't on Theresa's agenda. I know Richard mentioned, and I think it is worth a while making up, is that there is a nice big traffic island at the end of Banks Road, not that far from the station. And that it would be a sensible idea to have at least some route so that there would be a second route into the station, rather than what at the moment is. And I think it is worth us making that point, though it is in town, that actually making a road from that traffic island, which is almost looking down to where the station's going to be, would actually give some relief if there was an accident, rather than just a single thing, would give an alternative route. And I think it's worth us actually suggesting, even though it's, that it would be a good idea to have some sort of a relief, that would act as a relief road in the event of accidents or anything else. Rather than it being all committed to one whole game.
Counselor Craig.
Mars is not in agreement with that.
Oh, right, yeah.
It's already, I just noticed it was.
The counsel's a little bit.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for, the councillor's been quite right, and we should mention that. But I will say, the councillors here, that when we've been going to these meetings, and then having our own meetings with certain councillors here, so we could put something together, we've got all the relevant information as it stands, from HS2 as it stands. The problem is, councillors, that the information that we've been given, which we've been working on, could always scrap within next year. So we can only go so far, and yes, we are prepared to meet these people again. And I would like to see that when the next meeting is, John, Richard, I'd like to see, hopefully, all councillors come to that one. It's very important that residents go to the next one and really grill them like we did last time.
I'm just worried about the trackway, because we're struggling now. I mean, you take it, if you come from where we live, last night, trying to get through, forty-five minutes just to get into Sandacre, we've just got bump to bump. So how, we can't go anymore. You literally from here all the way into Sandacre.
I'd just like, I'd just like to go on record, as it stands now, even though it has got cross parts of sport, I would not support it. So I'd like to take that to on record, please. Because as it stands now, because of the lack of talking and consultation, who actually have, with the state foot people and councillors, I'd like to go on record, I would not support it into the trial, and I'll stand up and say that at Rockstone as well. So, that's me.
Okay, are any more comments, or are you going to take the vote that the council bring us as a football?
Yeah, I'll say it, mate.
Are we clear on the vote? So we're voting.
I'll just say that.
So, yeah, all those in David, I hope. Say this, it looks pretty nice.
It depends if it's going to be seconded or not.
No, no, no.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have you got a copy of this?
I think the hybrid decision statement was not HS2. I was going to say, I've got a few things, but just the first one, what you just said about the traffic last night was not. There seemed to be, I had a lot of great big dump trucks, is what I call them, coming out of the Tokesham Sides there, onto the bridge, and it was coming out of Red Sandacre Way. That's, I'm not saying that's what did cause all of it, because there was a lot of traffic all the HS2, a lot of logging, and everywhere was crazy last night. But I think a lot of them dump trucks coming out, whatever the reason was, that was what was doing it down here, that was that. If that helps you, I don't know. It's every night.
Every now and again.
It's every night. I've got a few things, if that's all right, to go through. I've had people contact me from various things, parking on Pasture Road has got really bad again. Obviously, outside the garages and that lot. I don't know the answers, but I've said I pass it on. I've had people again saying, there's still a need for pedestrian crossing on Pasture Road. The county council last administration did re-put one there, but because a few residents did want to outside their houses, it just got scrapped. It would be nice if we could ask them to revisit that and have a look at a different, yeah, it's a different type of administration now. They might look at it with a different set of eyes, I don't know. So it'd be nice if we could relook at a crossing on Pasture Road. There's a few more things. I've had, a lot of people contact me about the fencing around Aldy. Whether there could be, I actually know where I mean, along Nottingham Road. Whether there could be, I don't actually know where I mean, along Nottingham Road, they've actually put the fence right down, the patch has disappeared, it took the whole lot off. It's a very busy place, a lot of people walk down there, but older people, you've got a lot of people with school runs and stuff, and they're going to cross everyone to the Sandy Bridge side, and it's quite a bad crossing there. So, two of the ideas... So, obviously, got your along there, do you know what I mean?
No, I'm totally confused by you saying the Aldy.
Aldy, Aldy, sorry, sorry, it's been a very clear, Aldy's probably... The developments on Nottingham Road, and so...
The only thing to do is write, write to Aldy, to the builders and Aldy, but I was to expect, as I reply to a number of residents, his safety.
Yeah, so two of the ideas was, one, could the county council look at putting some kind of temporary crossing to help people get across, start their way? Or the other one, would they put some barriers along at a little bit, whether they can or not, I said that, that's so nasty. I know it's a busy road, because all the vehicles, the lorries, perhaps a bit too much to be...
It'll respite the road.
Sorry?
It'll respite the road.
Yeah, so perhaps a crossing would be better, a temporary one, if it could do it, I don't know.
I don't, you can't put temporary crossings just like that.
I don't know, I just...
A crossing would need a traffic code, sorry for interrupting.
No, no, it's okay, I'm just doing what we're supposed to do, so, you know. Um, right, several, then I've got two more. I've had an email off a resident that's round the corner, I won't shout out her number, but it's just round the corner. And the notice that some of the markings along Warren Avenue, I'll read it out, have been added to the yellow lines recently. But it looks to me that they are just going to paint over the lines that's already there, sprouting up, it looks like they're doing that all at the same time, which is very... Um, and it says here, not extending the lines on the corner that needs extending in order to give motorists to be on traffic coming towards them when they exit the bottom half of Warren Avenue. As I have said before, there has already been an accident here, and people from Oakfield Road and Harriet Street, as well as Warren Avenue, complained about the limited view they have exiting the corner. While the extended lines on all the other corners, but that one, and is it legal to have the line so short on this corner?
We've asked for that, Richard, didn't we?
We've asked.
We've asked, yeah, I don't know, someone's wrote to me, that's what we're there for.
Well, we've asked, that they would do it. I mean, I think all we can do is respond, so it's very, but we have asked, and they've said no. You know, we can't just sort, they've said no.
And then the other one is, we, back to the other crossing up on, let me have a look, I've got it down here, you know. The pedestrian crossing, when it is late, obviously when that came, it was taken by town council, and all of us here, we obviously supported where we wanted it.
We can't go into that, no.
You know, sadly, Brockso said we wanted to put it in a good place, which is pretty dangerous. Uh, I don't know, maybe we could ask the county council to look into doing some kind of consultation to see how dangerous it is, instead of just going, yeah, put it there. Uh, because people are really concerned, and one of them, and lots of others are, and all the shopkeepers are concerned as well, and they've said that they don't understand what, when everybody supported it going in one place, it went down Brockso and they changed their mind. And the actual thing wasn't paid for by the residents that live in there, so I don't know if we can tell them now, it was actually paid for by Simba. I've got the section one eighty-six here, if anyone wants to read it. And I just think that, because we were ignored, perhaps we should write to them and say, we're not happy with it. And I've made the decision, but I just think the county council should come out and look at it, and do some kind of, you know, watching people crossing there. Because the shops along there aren't getting any support from the new complex anyway, so putting a crossing there to benefit two or three people, and Jan was chair of community safety, I know she believes what I've said. Um, I do think it's dangerous, and I'll do anything I can to make it, it's not in a dangerous place, it's ridiculous. But I know the planning committee have made a decision, but they haven't put it there yet, so we could ask the county council to look at something, I don't know, some kind of study or something, because it's, I just don't want to see somebody getting my own, it's a really dangerous location.
Uh, I've got a small request from a few neighbours on Bezzel Lane, the top of Bezzel Lane. There was like, the double yellow lines extending around the cor, on the actual corner itself, they're too short, and the lorries can't get around them, lorries are so big, it just gets around with cars parking on that, right for those lines. Just want them extending down the road a bit, so the lorry can easily turn and get through, because it's a turn there to call. So, councillor, this?
Yeah, I just, somebody likes to just make some response to that. As regards to things on Warren Avenue, we have asked, it's been asked, and it's been refused. So, I don't really see what we can do. As regards to the pedestrian crossing, the county council, out of Brockso, they told your things, saying that they didn't mind where it was. So, I think we are beating our head against the brick wall, I'm sorry, Brockso have voted against it. Beat your head against Brockso, but Brockso have done it. The county council did not put up the objection, so I don't really see, there's no way that the county council is going to come out after they've already said that they didn't care. Where it was gonna be.
That's what the problem is, isn't it, that they care?
We're wasting our time. And as regards what Ray said, I think, while I would agree with him entirely about that corner, because of where it is and the proximity of it, they're not gonna do anything because it's...
Well, there's a car, a car that happened the other day.
But I think, you know, with what's right happened, there's nothing, they're not going to put any, anything there because of what's proposed on here. You know, I agree entirely, that's what's gonna happen.
This is now, that's, that's in the future, isn't it?
Yeah, but they're not gonna do anything, make you with anything that's approaching anywhere near that.
Yeah.
I mean, by all means, but I'm just counselling that I think that's the situation that's gonna happen.
We have tried to get double lines around there, and they said no, and that's always true. The problem is that councillor McCrae comes up with all these things that people tell him, and we quite understand what the residents want. But the problem is, the authority of Brockso and the county are just not interested. I've been here since two thousand, whatever it is, and, and the same stuff keeps coming up. I'm not criticizing, you're doing a good job, but how far do we go with it? Because the county are not interested, the borough are not interested, and it's the poor people's staple that suffer.
If we don't have a voice, we don't have any power, why are we here?
That's why I'm not gonna be.
We don't know me, do we? Probably why.
Sorry, that, it's a comment, but, but it just seems to me that if we ask the things we don't get, then maybe what's the point?
That's no question, everybody's thinking of a way we can increase the connect. But, Chair, I just tried, I mean, we know the politics is politics, isn't it? If, if actually in charge, they do what I want to do, and all we can keep doing is trying. Hence, the petition that's been around about the bank was ignored, but we've tried, you can't just ignore. The petition that's been around about traffic regulations, the speed limit is going round, we've tried, we can do no more. But it's no saying that we don't have a voice, we really just keep trying, and, and that's the way life is. And as far as I'm concerned, I'll always be trying. But if we get no results, that's down to the people that's in charge. And that's why, isn't it? But we are, our job.
Mars, I was gonna say, somewhere, sorry, that's why I'm not in party, I've got to do my own things. Such, some of it as well is, because sometimes decisions are made here, and then when it goes somewhere else, people change their mind very differently, which also debattes me, because I know that, and I know a lot. If I say the grass is green here, it's green everywhere, I'm not gonna take someone's poll somewhere else. And I do think it's sad when that happens, I don't know why, I'm not blaming anybody, because whatever it is. But I just think if we make a decision here, if that's what we should stick with, and then when we go somewhere else, we should keep up saying what we've said. I just think it's wrong if people change minds, but it is what it is, isn't it? Like, like Johnson, we have to try, the day you stop trying is, is something wrong, isn't it?
We can't not try, though.
Don't you think?
It's been the convictions, Chair, to what we are now, you never change. Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Uh, so, eleven, planning applications. Oh, and this is the one, no, this is in G K Look, sorry. Oh, one more, one more, oh, I missed one. Yeah, I was trying to put that one, sorry.
Yeah, right, um, I enjoy building a plan, as most people know, and, um, this particular...
I'm just gonna spend off and not tell you this.
Yeah, no, all my councillors. Now, I'm hoping you'd love to just see Mr. Mayor, councillor. Actually, this application, I don't see anything wrong with it at all. And I would suggest and propose that the council says yes to it. I have not one eye open that this is, it is not correct, it is correct, and it is okay. So I propose that we go forward with this.
Chair, yeah, again, again, fantastic, the staple, not a problem. The biggest problem, which I keep bringing up, and it will be, I'll go back to the convictions, is parking. And, as I live in the centre of Stapleford, and everybody stops me all the time about this, that and the other, that is why I bring it up, as I did with the old Ushingtons, as I do everywhere. Because there is no proper facilities for the parents that's dropping the children off to park there. And I know what you're gonna say, but until it's sorted, I'll keep bringing it up.
Councillor, you're quite right, and I would support you, but unfortunately, the law on planning does not state about cars and parking and all this sort of thing. Now, I agree with you, the law should change, but as we're looking at this particular plan, we have to go by what it is.
Yeah, uh, two things, really. I do agree with councillor McGrath's comment about the parking, we all know the parking team. But, uh, as a property councillor, and as what Brockso do, nobody's provided with any parking, so, uh, take that to Brockso. Uh, yeah, but they don't take any notice about it. But the important thing I would say is, I would have more concerns if it was a restaurant or a staple, at least, I think, at the ballet school, if you're only gonna have people dropping big blocks, they're not going to be parking there for a long period. And therefore, I've got less concerns with the opening of the ballet school, because you're only gonna have people dropping someone off. That is quite easy to do, it's not like they're gonna have to find somewhere to park for an hour, two hours, whatever, that isn't what normally happens. So, I think it's less of a concern than it would be if it was more of a business. And, let's face it, it was a business at a chemist's. So I don't really see the difference, that it was there as a chemist, and I don't see that we can suddenly say we've got objection to the parking there, when it was there as a chemist for some time. So, I think that it would be silly to actually say we object to it, because it was a shop there originally, it's not like it's a new shop, it's merely a change of use. And probably, a ballet school compared to a chemist, it probably can be less fun.
Some for pills, dipper weapons, then, uh, councillor, 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 what, councillor, what?
Just a bit of a, a focus from town members, the term knowledge laws have changed, they say they're an empty shop, with a suitcase, that's an empty building. It's empty, it's full of empty, it's not empty, it's an empty building. And we go to call parking, there was a rule, at every, uh, right corner, there was definitely call parking space, this is for Brockso, by the way. And that's gone by the board, the press of the local class was having a turn. So the, those who think themselves in a rage, they're going to call a parking, this is actually a serious, serious issue. Because everybody wants a car, it's even that, and there's less to count.
And Chair, and Chair, the reason I do bring it up, because you've got, in our area in particular, because I live in the town centre, and you've got the people on Horace who pay to park, and only stop to keep them there till five, so everybody will be there. And David's quite right, drop them off on a busy road, having a bit, I'm not, I'm not being sarcastic here. But parents are wanting to watch the children ballet dance, we have a guy, it's a pleasure to watch, I want ballet dancer. But there's, but the restrictions round it, Chair, are there. The people on Horace will then start moving, as the people on Williams did, when that, their house was built as well, because we need to look at the structure of parking, put it in this case, and that's all I, that's all I've thought. They can pass it, I mean, back here, councillor.
I'm sorry, I did forget one issue regarding, it was parking, or permit on the permit, parking on the road, I mean, there is a, there's a vehicle there that has not been abandoned, which is a snagged car. Right, which is a snagged car, abandoned, I mentioned it the other, the other week, right, it's still there, there's rats running in and out of it. It is, yes, but nothing, still being there.
On this particular, I mean...
Yeah, I'm proposing, I second the councillor Greg, I propose...
Councillor Brindle proposed, seconded by...
I seconded it.
A vote on this particular...
All those in favor, actually, Mary.
All those in favor, first of all. What's this called?
Ballet school, Ray.
One, two, three, four. Anybody against? And any abstainers?
I'm on planning, that's why I have to stay on.
Oh, Mary's engaged on Saturday, right? So, engagement has been fascinating, particularly, I'll stick to the main ones, particularly about uh, remembrance, and all of you here who have been involved in organizing things for remembrance. Many, many thanks, it's been, it's been an incredible event, uh, for the audience, the other... Uh, and thank you to councillor Brindle for going to play a wee bit of the church, the church left, uh, a beacon to light at the same time. In fact, that was so popular, we had to do it again, people came from outside the area. Uh, the Christmas light switch on, well, I think people were, were riled by the fireworks at that, so, um, that was, that was brilliant as well. Uh, I've stopped there, the month's coming up. Uh, is, is the, yes, and the St John's, that's the only thing I was gonna bring up, the St John's poster competition, for stopping, trying to stop, I think we talked about traffic management, trying to stop, actually, the kids try to stop their parents from parking outside the school. Really, three posters, so I've asked the head for pictures of those posters to see if we could do anything with them. He said if we put them on, say, our website, it might affect other schools, not just that, just, it might get one or two people thinking, you know what? If our kids could embarrass us into not doing it. Councillor McCrae.
No, I just wanted to thank Mary for all the events she's been through that we've done, because it, it's really appreciated. And especially when he kind of had to hold me out in there, not when we did the thing at the cross, because I, I've spoken in front of thousands of people, but that was quite emotional, I think, too early, didn't it, do you know what I mean? And that was really good. Can I just ask, though, we did the remembrance, say, up at the Methodist Church, because don't we always lay one there every year?
Well, they didn't have to, but normally it's done. Um, normally it's a petition to do, it doesn't normally need a letter from the council or the church, church council. And as it's the, and as it's the town council's, um, um, service, on the third of, yeah, on the third of March next year, the same church, I thought, really, it was pretty poor not having that attended, do you know what I mean?
No, that's what I was getting at, so nobody actually laid one there, do you know why?
No, I got the one.
I, I will answer that very briefly, without any things. Firstly, with most of the past managers and everything, we're all tied up here, and the deputy mayor wouldn't go.
So he refused to go, and that's not like this.
Not as much as I wanna go, and there was, there was no one here. Actually, he didn't refuse, and his, uh... His good lady did, yes. Nobody would go, and there was no other past managers available. That's the reason.
About, I find those at the cross, David, I do know.
Because it must be, it should be a mayor.
Oh, sorry.
And they should be sober.
Oh, sorry, I said like he's the mayor, I think, I, I think we should all fight for time off as well, because the Stapleford remembrance event, and I don't just mean the town clerk, I mean, I mean all the staff as well, because people don't see all that, and the amount of work they did and they put into that, and especially with it, we've, you know, we've got the best time clock we've had for twenty-three years. Let's say that, I, I, no, what I'm saying is, to be thrown in the deep end, to do a remembrance event for forty years, now, I've never seen so many people in the town swear, not even that many people going to this stage of Jesus' Christmas event, but I just think we should thank people, like I always say... Or, I, I just think we should thank people, like I always say, and I think we should thank the time clock, we should thank all the staff, because they did so much really, if you understand, it needs to be, you know, it's appreciated.
Is there a mobilisation, have they, has it got it?
Make sure we write that down. Do you want to have your name on it?
Very well.
Right, yeah, and the third, uh, December thirteenth is correspondence, I'll go after the date. Correspondence. That's it, so step fourteen, the section one three seven request from the Staveley Town. Oh, wow, that's, two, 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 got the three, the lot here was first.
Isn't that David's first, so you can't help it, but I said.
Um, we're still on, we're still on one three seven, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, well, the, um, football team, um, who has applied for, uh, funding, um, and in fact, um, I think it's a brilliant idea because, um, it's helping the young group, uh, and there's a lot of parents, I believe, that help out as well. Um, it's a good organisation, and, um, I suppose that we do, um, give them, uh, sorry to mention money. And, um, I hope that everyone will agree with me. Um, there's no way anyone should not, to be honest. But the proposal, the proposal is, um, the amount is, um, three hundred, not two thirty four. Two thirty four.
Quite something, one, two, five?
Yeah, two, three, four.
All right, okay.
Two, two, four, then.
Two, three, four.
Two, three, four, sorry.
Oh, it's because of the stuff, yeah. Two, three, four, Mary. So I propose that we give them two, three, four.
So, uh, who's seconded that proposal?
Can I just? I, I think two, three, four is the amount, why don't we call it two fifty? Alowing for a bit of extras, I, I'm quite happy, it's always.
Yeah, new proposals will keep the same, because it has the same proposal as you do. So.
Yeah, it would draw that, it would draw that, and the proposal would take a day. Two, two fifty. I've said, raise it at the set second, I think, that's fine.
Right, um, one more, did you want to comment just before we send it to vote there?
My, it's, I'm sorry, I can't think about it.
I was just, well, whichever way, I think to me you want to realise how much Mr Scott and the rest of them have done, all the community, to be honest. Standard that they've reached for the kids, and the young girls as well, they've got pots from, they have soccer pots from five years. And if you go by, I, I don't know, I'm not gonna be talking, I know there's been a problem about parking there. They do do the best to try and control the kickoff times, but if you see it is laying away, they've got, they've got rid of some of the, you know, naughty boys, and they do try and help them as well, and they've really done a fantastic job for the town. And you want to be proud of what some of them have done.
I don't think you spoke to anything.
Right, so, all four of the proposals. I don't think that's good.
Uh, can I read it?
That's pretty unanimous, isn't it? Was there any abstaining? Two abstainers.
That's certainly because we support the team, like, yeah, like, we're going to want them to.
Real strong in football.
Fourteen, now fifteen, the lot, and both of that they put on.
Um, well, basically, just to say that, um, the allotments have been inspected, Unam, and us can move, where, except on the 30th of October. There is some immediate work, and Steve Walters, the guy that does the work, is bringing these on Wednesday. So he's been working on a song, and he's going to bring an interim invoice as well, which he wasn't doing before, and he's bringing it to the end of the whole year. Um, and since he brings it in, it goes along. And Bezzel Lane one has just been inspected this week, and, um, there's a couple of things we need to work on that. So basically, they are in the process of a regular inspection, and hopefully moving forward on keeping them smart for the people on the allotments. That's it, Mary.
Two bids, um, just in case anybody gets anything. One of the bids that's going to be done on Martin Road, there's a branch over hanging on to the footpath, so if anybody complains, it is in hand. Um, because I've had a look at it. The other thing is, we've been advised that we need to do pollard the willows on Bigfield. That cross the, and that, which we have to do on a regular basis, um.
And that's being done in the centre.
Being done. Um, trust me, what was the cost?
I think it's four and a half pounds, I think.
It's about four and a half grand, which is quite reasonable, we've tried to get two more quotes, nobody responded. So, I'm just basically seeking that the council are happy that we do that, and get them pollarded safely. Which we do have to do every two years, otherwise they become dangerous.
Mr, Mr Mayor, yes.
I'm hoping that everybody's happy that we've paid for that done, we can't get it done any cheaper, and, uh, the guy who does it for us, Andy Lawlock, he is a proper tree surgeon, and he normally does an exceeding makeup show. And we can't get a cheap one, because nobody's responded, and it needs to be done.
This, this item, in fact, has to come through to the town council, and that is the council official note. Um, because the town's art is only.
Well, that's what I'm just saying.
Yeah, it's only less than three thousand.
Yes. Well, I've just said, I hope you know what's happening.
That's what I'm saying.
So this is goes out for a proposal, more than three thousand? So, who'd like to, um, propose?
I propose that we accept that quote and get it done.
I second that.
Anybody want to object? Thank you, right.
Uh, vote against? Any abstainers?
Oh, I think I've got class taken for the allotment.
Right, what happened?
I actually tell you, good on you, me, it doesn't really matter that you've got the allotment, if it doesn't affect your allotment. It, it would really, because it's not to do with, you haven't got the lot for people. Right, so I don't think it would really count.
Not to do with anyone, so, I mean. I've gotta change all if you get the question.
Do you wanna climb up those where they're not? Right, next.
Or move on to the payment schedule, as I noted back, is there any, any comments?
Can I, can I just say that the, the up tour of cheese, totally correct.
Uh, councillor, anything on that? Any, any other comments on the paper, our schedule? Right, that leads us to the date of the next meeting.
The date for January. And it's a budget on.
So, oh, extremely urgent things, fire, flood, bomb.
No.
I'm saying good.
County city area, because there's a noise in here.
There are, isn't there, the project, just asking a couple of questions, which is, or points, which is, I know, I understand your protest, but I'm.
If we close the meeting, we're allowed to, because there usually is application to make just before the, uh, because there's.
Close the meeting, I don't know.
If we close it, ask us.
Close the meeting, man.